Be ready soon enough. You can do, you can do a call to your roll call. All right, I will call the common council meeting on May 12th at 7:30. First up is pledge of allegiance, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. All right, roll call please.
Alder Radifrata.
Here.
Alder Clouter. Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Crowsey.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schroeder.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
You have a call.
All right, great. Next, public appearances, non agenda items, new appointments, I don't have anything, so I will just keep moving forward. Next up is consent agenda, is there a motion to approve? Move by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Randy, is there anything that someone would like to remove? Gabriella.
I'd like to remove the, oh, sorry, the minutes, the approval of the draft minutes from the agenda.
All right, anything else anyone wants to approve, or I mean, take out of the consent agenda? All right, then, all in favor of approving the consent agenda except for the approval of minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. All right, those are approved. And now we have approval of minutes, can someone make a motion to approve the approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approval of minutes.
Is there a second?
I can second.
A second by Dorothy, and then Gabriella, what did you want to fix?
Yes, on the first page, there, my, my name is misspelled, under number one, mayoral appointments, reappointments.
All right.
Just a small typo, so that's it.
All right, so I think we just did as a friendly, Shannon, are you okay with making that change to the minutes? Excellent, Dorothy, are you okay with your second?
Yes.
Excellent, I thought you might be. All right, all in favor of approving the minutes for number 28, say aye.
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 And any opposed, nay. All right, that is approved as well, on to administrator's report, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few things for the group. The staff continues to work as normal, everyone's doing a great job, keeping up with the various tasks at hand. I know the mayor's going to talk about the meetings that are taking place, but staff has been handling those meetings via Zoom, and they seem to be working really well, as you can see from these meetings, every time we do it, it seems to get a little more simple and straightforward. I think people in general are getting used to this also, which is good. Some items in regards to moving forward into the summer as we continue to endure this virus, is that all summer rec programming will be canceled. We will hopefully be working and having something in regards to the fall programming once school starts up. So, given the staffing it takes, and the maintenance, and all of the upfront work it takes for these type of programs, it doesn't make sense to start them mid-cycle during the year, so all summer programs are canceled. Shelter rentals through the summer months will be canceled. No restrooms will be open in the parks during the summer months, and the splash pad will be closed this year, so. Those are some things that I wanted to report, so that we could get that out to the public as early as possible. As you'll notice too, many of the summer, regional summer events are being canceled. I heard today that Brat Fest was being canceled. We'll find out more about the Fitchburg Festival of Speed coming up. But I think just in regards to safety and keeping the numbers of people that are gathering, we're being extra cautious on that, on that front, so. If anyone has any questions about those, feel free to either ask those now or give me a call. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, and I know we haven't heard anything official about things like key concerts in the park, the art fair, the back to school thing, I think all those are very tentative right now, even though there's been no official word one way or the other.
Exactly, yep.
All right, Julia, and Dorothy.
Oh, Dorothy was first.
Oh, all right, Dorothy.
Yeah, I was just going to request that the Dolly Bike Hub bathrooms be opened for the season, because people, there's a lot of biking going on, and many of it is relatively long distance, and people probably are looking forward to that potty stop there.
We're keeping all restrooms closed, just for safety purposes, Dorothy. It's, there's too much opportunity for cross-contamination in restrooms, so we're keeping all public restrooms closed.
And how are those being posted then?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Are they being posted?
It's posted on the restroom facility, and we're also posting on our website that all public restrooms are closed.
Okay, I'll have to learn to hold it.
All right, Julia.
I have a question regarding the parks, so, so you mentioned the city's going to close the splash, the splash pad, but then how, what about the parks and the soccer field and the baseball field and the tennis court they are going to be closed to?
Those, those facilities will be open, but with no organized activities through our parks department or rec department. They'll be open, but we will be enforcing whatever the governor's orders are on social distancing. As of right now, it's the six-foot order for social distancing, so we'll allow people to utilize the parks as recreational opportunities, but not for any organized sporting activities through the city.
But tennis and basketball are still closed as of now.
Yeah, as of now, as of now, tennis and basketball are closed, but if the governor opens those up, it'll be with whatever restrictions he has.
And people are free to use the soccer field, the softball, the baseball, but you should be with people in your household, doing social distancing and those sort of things.
And we won't be lining the fields or putting the bases out or anything like that.
Yeah, okay, did you have a follow-up, Julia? Yeah, go ahead, Julia.
Yeah, if the city of Madison also, or the other municipality closing the splash pad too?
I am not aware, I know some of the other cities have closed their swimming pools, I'm not familiar with any other cities that have splash pads.
I don't think anyone's opening it up at this point, undetermined, we haven't heard if they will or not, but I think our staff said that it'd probably take, it might take three or four weeks even to get it ready, because sometimes there's leaks, and you're trying to make sure everything works right, and so if we can't even open until, well, at this point, you know, it's at least a month before, roughly, before that could happen.
Yep, yes, that's correct.
I actually got a question from you too.
Shannon.
So, as far as like the Fitchburg stuff, so we've just gone ahead and just said those are going to be, like the splash pad stuff are going to be closed no matter what, like our outcome from Tony Evers, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Through, just through the summer months due to staffing. The other thing is, in regards to staffing, is that we will, we will not be hiring any of the temporary summer staff, that's one reason we have to get rid of some of these programs and shut down some of these activities in the summer. And then, we will be shutting down all out-of-state travel of, of our staff, and we're putting a, a moratorium on hiring non-essential staff, so.
Do you want to talk about other staff are kind of covering all those summer positions, right?
That's correct, we do have other staff that are assisting the outdoor maintenance people, helping with the lawns of the, or the grass in the parks and things like that, people that have limited opportunities to do their job right now, they're helping out in other areas.
And they're doing some maintenance on those facilities too, right?
Yeah, we'll be painting the picnic tables, the park benches, inside of the restrooms. We'll be doing all sort of maintenance that we normally can't get to in a given year.
Julia.
Yes, one of the question is, what is going to happen with the, with the staff for the rec department?
We are not hiring that staff this summer, the, the current staff you're talking about, our full-time staff?
Yeah, the two full-time employee.
They're helping out in the parks maintenance department.
So, okay, so, okay, so they're not going to be layoff or full or?
Yeah, they'll, they'll continue working full-time.
Yeah, we're not having any layoffs or full lows of our staff.
Nope. Yeah, all staff is working as of right now.
Anything else? All right, then we will move along, thank you, Pat. Plan Commission, we haven't met yet, anything you wanted to say, Tom? All right, Public Works, Sarah.
Yes, Public Works, I move approval of resolution R 4820 granting a permanent limited easement for public path and lighting construction on the Nine Springs Golf Course Park property.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Shannon, did Public Works approve, Sarah?
Yes.
Did Park Commission?
Yes.
And I know Plan Commission also approved, all right, do you want to talk about it, Sarah?
Yeah, so this is part of the Fish Hatree construction, that along the Nine Springs Golf Course, then a new path and pedestrian bridge is being designed over the creek, and a safer crossing was created, which required lighting. This probably sounds familiar to some people, because the common council did pursue an amendment to the deed restriction that would allow for the construction of the path and the lighting. The deed was granted by the circuit court in March 2020, and staff is seeking approval to change the right-of-way to permanent limited easement on the park property. That this is the, that Fish Hatree area right in front of the Nine Springs Golf Course really providing a safe, lighted pathway for pedestrians. And Pat, please jump in if I missed anything, apologies.
You did a good job with that one, thank you.
Any questions at all? Yeah, Dorothy.
Am I correct that the reason for needing to do a pedestrian bridge is because the width of the current bridge is not adequate for adding that extra path?
The, the reason for adding the extended path is the width of the roadway is increasing, so that we had to do more of a cantilever-type system over the park there because of the stormwater, pipe that goes under there.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that's approved, next one, Sarah?
I move approval for resolution R 8820 authorizing acceptance of the East Fire Station solar improvements bid.
I'll second.
Second by Dorothy, did Public Works approve, Sarah?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right, do you want to speak to this one, Sarah?
Sure, so this is part of the East Fire Station. Notice of bid was put out to install solar, that the fire station was built to accommodate. They received four bids, and Sunvest was the lowest bidder. It is a hundred kilowatt system, and, I'm trying to think here exactly, the low bid was approximately 26% lower than the previous estimate, so staff is recommending the low bid with Sunvest, and, sorry, looking at my notes here, for the hundred kilowatt project, the net cost, they're anticipating, incorporating the net cost, they're assuming a 12.3 years to pay back the project.
All right, Pat, anything you want to add? All right, I know that this was part of the project and the building of the station, it's all been budgeted for and planned for. Any other questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved, anything else for Public Works, Sarah?
Nothing at this time.
All right, how about Park Commission?
For the Park Commission, I move approval of resolution R 920 approval of the swing set and playground structure for Terravessa South Park.
Second.
Second by Dorothy, did Parks approve?
Yes.
Did Finance?
Yes.
All right, do you want to talk about this one, Sarah?
Yeah, so this is part of the Terravessa development, it's on the Frisay and Spinach intersection, kind of on the southern end of the park. City staff recommended the Northland Option 1. Since we don't have residents within this district, or within this development currently, obviously, we just went with the staff's expertise of kind of having a very aesthetically pleasing park. It does, in your pack, you'll see that it does kind of have a nature look to it, so we received 10 proposals. The park is budgeted at the 40,000, so it was just kind of based on the expertise of the park staff, and so we moved forward with approving Northland Option 1.
All right, and I know that, I think in the next month, people will be moving in, so they'll be wanting that playground, Dorothy, go ahead.
Am I correct, looking at the map, that this is located nearest the higher-density parts of the neighborhoods?
That is correct, the current, the current density of the neighborhood, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, anyone else? All right, then all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved, anything else for Parks, Sarah?
The only other comment I had is that we did install, volunteers installed a swallow home within the Burn Park neighborhood, and it's, it was all done by volunteers, and just walking out today, it's a really attractive swallow home, and ideally, it's the best compromise where we can still encourage swallows in the neighborhood to do their fantastic job of eating mosquitoes, but still have a structure usable, and that they don't make their nests within the structure, so. This year, the nests will still be in the structure as we try to encourage swallows to move to the swallow home, and next year, the structure will be boarded up, so the swallows can't nest within there, and ideally, they shift to the swallow home, but the volunteers did a really nice job, that the swallow house looks fantastic. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, all right, going to Library Board, Randy?
We have not met, but I have received a number of nice introductory emails from board members, so we're all waiting for that day that we can meet. I have noticed on the Fitchburg library website that there is limited curbside book pickup, so if anybody's interested, visit the website.
I know that it's been really popular, a lot of people have been doing that curbside pickup.
Yeah.
The biggest thing is you can't get books from their libraries, it has to be books they have on hand.
Sure, sure.
And I know they're also working on when you'll be able to return books, because they have to let them sit for, I think, three days before they then shovel them because of the coronavirus, so they're working on that piece of it as well.
Yeah, they're doing a great job though, yeah, doing it.
All right, thank you. Commission on Agent Well, Dorothy.
Thank you. We're continuing to not meet, though the staff is still working, doing a good job keeping in touch with all their folks. We recently had the drive-by parade, hopefully, people participated in that, I know I stopped by. Part of what they're doing is, the people who usually do quilt-making are currently making masks, so if there's people out in the community that need a mask, that would be one place you can contact the senior center and ask if you could get ahold of a mask.
All right, I know there are people who are very, very much missing each other at the senior center as well, there's a lot of people that miss the social part as much as anything else.
And thanks to other departments for participating in the parade as well, it was fun to see everyone in costume.
All right, moving along, RCC, Gabriella?
Yes, the Resource Conservation Commission, the next meeting is scheduled for June 15th, tentatively, and I also would just like everyone, so the Fitchburg Star came out a couple days ago, everyone should have seen that in their mailbox, and the sustainability specialist for the city, Phil Groupie, wrote a really beautiful piece, opinion piece, called "As We Recover From COVID-19, We Can Do It Sustainably", that's on page four of the paper, and I'd encourage you all to read it, I think it's really beautifully written, and a really interesting take on what it can mean for Fitchburg to grow sustainably coming out of COVID-19 in that context, so I highly recommend checking that out.
All right, thank you. Transportation and Transit.
We do not currently have a meeting scheduled.
CDO, Julia?
No report.
All right, Ag and Rural Affairs, Randy?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right, what about EMS, Shannon?
Nothing to report.
All right, Bicycle Committee, Joe?
Our next committee is scheduled on the 30th of June, nothing to report for now.
All right.
No, I'll wait till my Alder reports for what I'm going to say.
Okay, Tree Advisory Committee?
We're planning to meet again in September.
All right, Mayor Mark's Preservation, Shannon?
Nothing.
Nothing, all right. Dorothy, Census Complete Count Committee?
Thank you, got a note from Wade, he says he would like to hold committee meeting in June, it's not scheduled yet. As of the last check, city self-response rate of roughly 71%, which is about mirroring the county average of 72% and above the state average of 66%. And per Census Bureau rep, city is on pace to surpass self-response rate from the 2010 census. Census Bureau will begin field operations, doing door-to-door canvassing for those residents that, that didn't self-respond in the coming months.
All right, reminder, anyone out there watching, make sure you get that done, Housing Advisory, Dorothy?
We're scheduled to meet on June 8th, working on having a couple of communities share some of the programs that they have together for housing, and anybody on council or the public would be welcome to sit in on those.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Dorothy, I need to ask you a question, I was, I went to the housing plan to check for some, some issues there, I was looking for some information, and I, and I went to the action plan for 2019 and 2020, so are you guys going through the action plan and determining where we are?
I couldn't say exactly where we're at. Joyce would have to probably answer that question for us.
I know we're a little behind.
Someone else also.
I know we're a little behind where we wanted to be, we were, we didn't get the committee together as quickly as we had hoped to, so they just had one meeting so far. But I think that's.
But I, I wondered if in that meeting you guys went through the action plan and determined which one are the one that, because some of the action plan we have for 2019, I don't know, they are, you know, we need to move forward to 2020, so, you know.
It's just, it's just quarterly meetings, so it's difficult, I can certainly take a note that we need to make sure to review that.
Okay.
All right, moving along to Finance Committee, Julia?
So, the Finance Committee, we review the detailed checks issued, check number 120756-120800, dating from April 16, 2020 to April 30, 2020, totally 1,403,202.9 cents. Also, we, we review all the CH payments from April 2020 in the amount of 501,210 with 47 cents. And then we have a couple of resolution coming at the end of the agenda.
All right, sounds good. Personnel Committee, Dorothy?
First, I'm going to back back up to H and I, and I would like to have the H and I committee added to that list of other committees. Notes that I got again from Wade, the grant program staff is connected with seven of eight funding award recipients, hoping to connect with the eighth this week, yet still working out some kinks with them, given the relative holding pattern that we are all in, but it seems all are in good shape with kicking off projects, et cetera, in the near future. Plan is to schedule a committee meeting in June, whether in person or remotely, to report back on 2019 projects and talk about the Fitchburg Fund's next steps and potential 2021 program improvements. North Fish Hatree Road Neighborhood Hub, there were presentations made to CDO and the Park Commission. Next steps for that is to connect with relevant stakeholders and city staff, and hold a neighborhood meeting when it's okay to do so. Related to the Navigators, he is coordinating six weeks of summer programming at Leopold Park in North Fish Hatree Road area, has also begun working in other two H and I neighborhoods, and it sounds as though we're going to need a staff conversation about what the Navigators are going to be able to do at the park if we're not holding park activities. So I'll, I'll leave that between Pat and Aaron to talk to him about that.
All right, thank you. Pat said he will connect and check on that piece, all right. Personnel, I don't think you've met, but is there anything for Personnel Committee, Dorothy?
Personnel has not met. Yeah, I don't have anything on a future meeting date at this point.
Okay, Sarah, Public Safety, anything?
We have not met, so no report.
I believe in, in two weeks you will be having to meet, is it, Tracy?
First meeting in June, we're looking at the alcohol renewal.
Oh, okay, first meeting in June you'll have to for alcohol renewals. And normally, for people on that committee, you would be meeting really every time there's a council meeting, but it was for events, all stuff, and unfortunately, all the events are getting canceled, and so people don't need event permits right now, so, all right. Mayor's Report, all right, number of things to touch base on, let's see. As you've noticed, we started having more and more committees meet and having the virtual option. I think, you know, in the next couple weeks, you'll see even more of that, and pretty much everyone probably starting to meet again. You know, we're going to continue to open up the state, but I think it's important to still have the online option available for people, but, you know, it's been a while, and stuff is starting to happen more and more, so I think you'll see more and more of our subcommittees meeting here, starting in the next couple weeks, certainly in June. Also, wanted to mention that this is Police Week, so I want to just kind of recognize and thank our police officers, police department, they do a great job for us here in the city, so thank you for that. And next week is Public Works Week, and so also, thank you to our Public Works team for all the stuff that they do for us, whether it's paving roads in the winter, fixing roads this time of year, making sure, working with our parks department to get areas mowed, and just, you know, also, all the work they do with all the different developments happening, so thank you to all them as well. I know that last meeting, some people had talked about doing parades through different neighborhoods. We are working on that, police, fire, and I think even they're contacting Public Works as well, EMS. And they are looking at starting to do something on Friday nights, and they'll go to different neighborhoods every week. It'll be, this week or next week will be the first one, they're trying to work out logistics, but they will do a few neighborhoods each night, and then the next week they'll do more. So they're going to do it more than once, they're not going to try and hit the whole city in one night, but they will try to, you know, promote that on the website, and our Facebook pages, social media pages, Fact TV, those types of things, and just making sure that people are following social distance rules during that, they're not, you know, gathering with much people in their driveways, just, you know, stay with your family, but are looking for, to do that, and let's see here, what else? Just a reminder again, I think I mentioned it once or twice already, that the first council meeting in July, we are going to cancel, so make sure you have that on your schedule. I think that another thing I want to talk about is, you're seeing the importance during this coronavirus outbreak of things like our parks, our library, Fact TV, you know, our Public Works departments, and so I think it's really important, especially as we're starting that budget season, to think about how important some of these, all these resources are for our citizens, and how we need to continue funding some of these things. all these resources are for our citizens and how we need to continue funding some of these things that, um, are critical, especially in times like this. Another thing I wanted to mention about is, uh, it occurred to me about budget approvals. I don't think even people who've been on council for a while realize that things are coming through, they go to Finance Committee, um, you know, it's over a certain dollar amount, I have to approve them as the mayor. But by the time it gets to me for approval, if it's over a certain dollar amount, someone, a city, a staff member puts it in what's called OnBase, our online system. The department manager has to approve it, then two people in Finance have to approve it, including Misty Dodge, our Finance Director. Pat approves it, and then I approve it. So by the time I see it, it's been looked at by a lot of important people, and I rarely even have a question, but I just wanted to make sure people knew that when budget things are coming through, it's going through a lot of different eyes, a lot of different people, so. Uh, that was something that I didn't realize when I was a council member until I became the mayor, and so I just wanted to kinda share that and trying to continue to educate people on what's happening here. Um, speaking of budget season, I am working on the CIP with, uh, Pat and Misty Dodge. I had to cut about eight hundred thousand dollars from requests for next year and about one and a half million over the next few years. Um, so we're working on that right now. Unfortunately, you know, we get the budget kinda set up and then things happen. For example, our salt shed that hole, that holes all of our salt is about fifteen years old, and the wood beams are rotted. And so now we're gonna have to replace that. We expected that to be a thirty, forty-year building, and that's about half a million dollars now that I have to try and fit into the budget unexpectedly. Um, it'd be nice if it was next year. I think it's gonna have to be two years, but there's a big safety concern with that, so. Fortunately, things always come up, um, but you'll see, you know, that, uh, that soon. And I think the kinda big thing is with the financial impacts that people have had because of the coronavirus. I'm trying to make sure that we're keeping Fitchburg affordable for everyone, and so if we can maintain the taxes kind of a level, um, level field, I think that's really important, especially in a year like this when so many people have been impacted financially because of that. But our budget overall is not, uh, having the impact and the hit that you'll see from Madison, from the county, from the state, because a lot of our, the majority of our budget comes from property taxes, and that is pretty stable. It doesn't go up and down very much. You know, we're gonna see a little bit of a hit in terms of maybe a few less building permits, though it's not a lot here in Fitchburg. Uh, we're gonna have less room taxes, and that hits our economic development, especially our chamber. And we're getting a little bit less interest from our investments, but overall, uh, we're not seeing a huge impact like some other municipalities are, which is good news for us. And that's why we, part of the reason why we don't have to do things like furloughs and laying people off, so that's great. And we've been, done a great job of being financially stable and having really good financial practices, and you see that now in a year like this. Uh, let's see, the last thing I wanted to mention was our Public Works Director, Mike Bisbach, is unfortunately leaving the city at the end of the month. He has not been here quite a year yet, but he got recruited for a position. Uh, he live, he doesn't live here. I can't remember where he lives now. Dodge?
Dodgeville.
Dodgeville, yeah. And it's a company in Dodgeville, offered him a really good job with, for a lot of, I guess they offered him once, and he said no, and they came back with a lot more money, and I think even some possible ownership in the business itself. And so it was too good of an offer, and, uh, so he is unfortunately leaving the city effective the end of the month. Uh, it's the first kind of upper management position that we've had leave in about ten months, and I think that that's a great thing, and I wanna keep, uh, the turnover low, because in previous years, turnover had been pretty high in the city, unfortunately. And that was partly the people sitting in this chair, I think, as a mayor, and sometimes other people as well. And so I think it's important as we're working with city staff and we're, uh, working with the public as well, but especially with city staff, that we're making sure that we're being respectful of them and working well with them and doing what we can to make sure that they're happy here, because the turnover we had, especially in Public Works, was pretty bad for a while, and that really impacts the services we can provide for our residents, so. Just wanted to make sure that you knew that he was leaving, and I think we'll be able to get someone else in that role pretty quickly, but wanted to at least mention that. So, kind of a lot of stuff today, but I can go to Alder Reports next. How about Gabriella? Start here in the room.
Uh, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, you can. Go ahead, Julia, sorry.
Yeah, I want to know, uh, what is the city doing to obtain any grants from FEMA or other federal agencies to cover some of our, um, COVID expenses?
Pat, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, we have been keeping track of all, uh, time, uh, spent in regards to, uh, COVID nineteen. Uh, that's being done on our time sheet. We don't know if there's going to be any, uh, opportunity for grants for cities, but we will have that information just in case, uh, there is. So Misty's done a good job. We do have a coded number, uh, on the time sheet that, that covers all those type of activities.
Any other questions for me at all? Tom, you have a question? Yeah.
So I have another question.
Tom's got one, hold on. Go ahead, Tom. Go ahead, Tom.
I'll yield to her, go ahead. All right, go ahead, take her.
All right, he's letting you go ahead, Julia.
Yes, so what is the plan to replace Mike? So we are gonna, um, we are gonna, uh, we are gonna start with the recruitment sooner, or we are gonna put an interim Public Works Director?
We, um, we are going to open it up internally for about a week. Uh, it was advertised today internally for a week. If we don't have any applicants internally, we'll open it up to the public for about three weeks. And, uh, we hope to have somebody on board, though, fairly soon, as the mayor noted.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Tom?
Mayor, in reference to the salt shed, I think you're probably aware of it. Uh, was there any warranty with that, or was there anything we can go back and reference? When that was built, that was built, I remember, I remember it was built. I wasn't in this chair then, but I remember it was built years ago.
We're looking into that right now, because it has not been, it's not a very old building, so we're checking in to see who built that and what kinda warranty there is.
Yep.
Any other questions for me? All right.
So, yeah, I have another question.
All right.
So are you gonna put that, um, project in the CIP plan?
It is in the CIP, yep. It's gonna be, at this point, I believe it's in twenty-two instead of twenty-one.
That's correct.
Okay.
You'll see it in there. All right. Gabriella?
A few things for me. Uh, first, in case you haven't heard, there's gonna be a Restaurant Week next week. Uh, actually, a couple of weeks. It's from May eighteenth through May thirtieth. It's a carryout Restaurant Week. I took a look at the list, and there's several Fitchburg restaurants on there, so I encourage you to check it out. Should be, um, pretty delicious. And then also the Fitchburg Farmers Market, if you haven't heard, uh, it is open from Thursdays from three to six, and they do encourage everyone to order in advance, and there's gonna be drive-through pickup. And the website, uh, is fitchburgmarket.wordpress.com, and you can take a look at the different vendors that are gonna be advertising, uh, or sorry, advertising for what they have available that day. Um, also, the, if you haven't heard, um, Alliant Energy is now a community testing site for COVID nineteen. Uh, you can get a drive-through test, and I think they have over eight hundred available per day. Uh, so if you do think you need a test, that's an option for you, um, although I, I do believe that the public health you know, asks you to call your doctor first, um, to check on it, but that is an option for you, and also they said to note that it's not an antibody test, so it can't tell you if you used to have the virus. It's only for people that currently have it. So it's a little bit different, um, now that we're a little bit farther along in the, in the progress of the pandemic. Um, and then also, I've, I just one last, um, a few extra thoughts. I've, you know, it's been a little over a month since the April election, and I've been doing some reflecting about, um, where we stand, especially, you know, now that we have more of an understanding of COVID nineteen. I think there's a real risk that we are gonna get complacent in protecting ourselves from it. You know, it's, it's a little bit harder to remember to wash your hands or stay distant. Uh, it gets harder and harder as it goes on. Um, and I'm thinking all the way down to November and what that's gonna mean for the upcoming election. And I have a lot of concerns about, you know, if we see a resurgence in the fall of the virus, um, concerns about how, what kinda chaos that could create uh, that looks like the kinda chaos around the April election. You know, as you know, I was making a lot of calls and knocking doors earlier on, but then making calls once the pandemic set in. And, uh, on Election Day, I made quite a lot of calls encouraging people to drop their absentee ballots off, uh, and also letting them know that the polling place was the same. And I talked to a lot of people that, uh, did not receive their absentee ballot and did not feel comfortable going to the polls and couldn't vote at all. And it was a pretty, uh, it was very emotional to actually talk to them and hear they're upset at, uh, at that situation. And I think the city needs to be, we need to be really deliberate in thinking about how we can, um, make sure our citizens have the information they need so that they can make the right decision, because the turnout in the fall is gonna be a lot bigger than the turnout in the spring. Um, and I looked at some of the numbers, and Tracy can, I'm, they're, these are all on the Clerk's website already, but um, eighty-three percent of the people that voted in spring twenty nineteen were actually absentee votes. Um, versus in the spring of twenty nineteen, it was sixteen, sixteen percent absentee. So we're gonna see, see a huge resurgence in the fall, and I think we need to start having those conversations now about what that looks like, so that we're not caught off guards, um, come, come the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Shannon?
I've got nothing.
Nothing, all right. Tom?
Um, you probably saw or probably heard, there was a fire on Seminole Highway. If you wanna report, I have on that, is I was just glad that nobody got hurt. The other thing, if you didn't see in the paper, Janet Gratz, um, new Alders probably don't know her, but, uh, she lived on Wayland Road for a year. She passed away last week, I'm sorry to say. Janet, um, was also a Wayland. Now you know why she lived on Wayland Road. And she passed last week. So that's, that was in Randy, in our, my district. That's all I have.
All right. Randy?
Uh, just one item. With the road construction, McKee, PD, and Fish Hatree, uh, it's been brought to my attention, just friendly reminders from constituents, slow down. I know when I drive through, it, it, it is well laid out and well organized, but if you're moving at a high rate of speed, it wouldn't take much to have that accident, so just a reminder, slow down.
Good reminder, thank you. Uh, Dorothy?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I wanted to mention the Seminole Highway Fire, which was in, um, Joe's in my district. Um, and I'd like Joe to talk about that, because he had a little more interaction with some of the folks. Um, I went to that. I was a little, a little bit late, because I was on another Zoom meeting, uh, while it was starting to happen, um, but I caught up to it. Um, the two fellows that lost their housing are fairly okay. And again, I'll let Joe talk a little bit more about them if he'd like to. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention is that I drove past the, um, uh, on south on Seminole Highway, uh, near McKee. And as promised to the neighborhood, there are a lot of trees that have been removed to make room for that pond and the expansion of the roadway on the north side of Seminole Highway. Um, the ne- the neighbors were pretty upset, but they were going to have to lose all those trees, but, uh, it was pretty well explained to them why it would be necessary, as well as, um, why it was not gonna be possible to save any of them. So it's kind, kind of sad, but necessary.
All right, thank you. Let's keep it in District One. Joe?
All right. Um, so, uh, just following up with, uh, Tom and then Dorothy, the, uh, fire um, that occurred last weekend, um, two single men, um, were displaced. Um, one had sort of significantly more damage in his apartment than the other. Um, I, I'll just say, for anybody watching today that's a renter, um, please purchase renters insurance. It costs twelve to fifteen dollars a month. Um, I actually was, uh, I, I lived in Fitchburg in a different part, um, about eight or nine years ago, and I experienced a fire in an eight-unit apartment, and um, my wife was smarter than I was and decided to purchase renters insurance before that, and um, we were the only one out of the eight that had it. All of our stuff got replaced. We got, you know, a, a, a hotel to stay in for a while, um, whereas all of our neighbors, you know, lost everything and sort of had to restart, so. Um, both of the men are doing okay. They've got people to stay with, and, um, I just wanna give a shout out to, um, uh, you know, Chief Paul Vermaeker and, um, the, the Fire Department. Um, they just do an excellent job, and, you know, were able to contain the fire. They explained it really well. They explained sort of how the damage got started, and they explained the whole process, and were there, you know, sort of supporting, um, you know, the folks who, who lost their stuff. Um, I will mention that, um, an interview occurred today, um, um, with Dr. Narshust Duma. She, uh, works in the Carbone, uh, uh, Cancer Center at UW. Um, and it was mainly targeted at, uh, residents in the allied neighborhood. Um, you know, as folks may or may not know, um, the, the amount of COVID cases in Wisconsin um, disproportionately are Latino. Um, the interview was in Spanish, um, and it will be, um, broadcast on, uh, Fitchburg Fact TV. Uh, and I will make sure to share it with the council, uh, once it comes out. It was just a really good outreach um, effort. Local leaders in the neighborhood were involved, as well as, um, um, public health. Um, so, you know, definitely proud of, uh, folks doing education, um, around, uh, COVID nineteen in these ti- times, especially for, uh, you know, families who are more at risk. Um, and then finally, um, a nonprofit, uh, here in Dane County, uh, Free Bikes for Kids is actually offering, um, free bikes for adults, uh, who are essential workers. Um, so if you, or anybody watching today, has, um, people in their life that are essential workers, there will be a, um, a pickup on June sixth, um, at their location on twenty thirty-one Zire Road. Um, if you are an essential worker, you know one, um, please feel free to get in contact with, uh, the Executive Director, Kristy Schilling. Um, and, uh, again, the organization is Free Bikes for Kids. They have a website that you can, uh, Google and, and look up, uh, or you can just talk to me if you have more questions.
All right, thank you, and good job marrying a smart woman. All right. District Two, Julia?
Yeah, so, um, the only thing that I want to add is that we did, uh, last weekend, uh, we got Pirella and some neighbor, we did some cleaning of the McKee Farm Park. Um, it wasn't too bad, the park. Uh, we were surprised, maybe because people are not using it too much, but, um, especially there was more garbage in the watershed, but it wasn't like a big deal. Uh, but I want to thank the neighbor that they show up, um, also, um, Alder Udell was present too. Um, the other thing that I want to mention is, um, that, uh, the Hallmark, uh, Place Store, uh, beside Pick and Save closed, and it was kind of the postal office that we have in Fitchburg. So some of that work is being done now in the, um, uh, the pharmacy, the family pharmacy. Uh, and if you really need to buy stamps or, or other shipping stuff, the UPS Store is also offering that services. Um, so in case that you need to say, where can I buy stamps in Fitchburg, you know what I mean? So, um, so, um, so I don't know if the Hallmark Place is gonna be closed temporary or forever, but, um, it was our, you know, post, uh, eh, station, so. The other thing I want to mention is that we have a new business in District Two. Uh, they did a quiet opening, is we have a, a Domino Pizza Store besides, uh, Kudova. So for those that they need to buy pizza, because I think, you know, Candle Romal is gone. Um, but, you know, they did a quiet, uh, opening, um, because we cannot do any, you know, ribbon cutting or, but I want to mention that, um, what else? And also, I heard a couple of complaint for- And also, I heard a couple of complaint for some neighbors about Richardson Street, that there are the marks on the pavement. So how we can fix it, especially, you know, the bike marks and the central line lanes are, you don't see it and it's true. So maybe, I don't know, I need to talk to Public Works, someone there to see if there is any plan to do the marks, to paint the marks. Because there are some concern about Richardson Street that people are experiencing too. So, so we want to be sure that the marking on the pavement are fine. Bicycles need to know where are the marks and people are, drivers are respecting, they are respecting the speed. It happened two weeks ago. One of the park, was a car park, one of my neighbor, they live in the corner of Wiltshire and McKee, the truck was parked on the street and one of the car was coming at high velocity, didn't make the stop and it went through the truck. It was parked. So, and there were a small kid on the yard plane. So, so I think we need to, I don't know what to do, but we need to do something about how we're going to control this, how people are experiencing on the, on this street. So it's another concern. That's it.
All right. Well, Richardson is a really important street, so we should make sure that looks tip-top at all times, I think. But maybe I'm biased on that. Pat, are you going to touch base with Public Works about that?
Yeah, we do our pavement markings on a regular basement that'll, or basis, not basement, on a regular basis. And that'll come in before this body here in the next month or so. We do that before school starts because we do all the school crossings and such. So I'll make sure that that area is on our pavement marking schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Going on, oh, sorry, Sarah? District Three, my favorite district. Go ahead.
No, I just had one comment. I'm, I know this was brought up last week and Tom asked about the Sunnyside Dog Park and that it's still not open and I know Parks is working to get that open soon, but I am receiving several emails from residents for dogs off leashes. So just a friendly reminder for everyone that it's safer for your dog to be on a leash, it's safer for your other residents. So please just have your dog on a leash. It is a city ordinance to have your dog leashed when not on your property. That's it.
All right. I know we're hoping next week we'll be able to open up the dog park with the warm weather we're getting this week, that there should be more growth of the grass. That's the big thing is that the grass is still pretty young in that area and we don't want to get torn up early this spring. So, all right, moving along to unfinished business. There's nothing. So new business, we got some direct referrals on here. Would someone like to do a motion for the first one for me, please?
I can move it.
All right. Dorothy, thank you. You gotta read it, though.
All right. It's Resolution R 6920, Resolution Ratifying the Emergency Proclamation, Allowing Members of the Common Council and Other Bodies to Appear Telephonically.
Nope, nope, you're not on the right thing. It's Resolution R 7120. I don't know.
No, then extending the emergency proclamation due to COVID-19.
Yep. Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second? Second by Shannon. Let's see. So I can speak to this a little bit and Pat, you can weigh in after that. This is really extending, we did this, it was probably about a month ago, over a month ago now, and it's doing a number of different things. The county extended theirs and so we're really matching what the county did. This does not have anything to do, though, with businesses closing down and when they reopen. That's still the governor and we follow whatever the governor does for that. So it's not doing anything like that, but it's really just continuing things like allowing virtual meetings, continue to use the emergency fund we previously authorized to pay for those emergency expenditures, emergency budget procedures. It will also help us in, excuse me, just in, you know, for any kind of reimbursement we might get, we want to make sure that we have the emergency order still going so we can make sure we get any funds that are available for something like that as well. So it's really just extending what we've been doing so far. Pat, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that was a good explanation. It is, it is a requirement since it runs out that we do this extension and, and parallel with the county's doing.
And that to say that we couldn't keep doing something like a virtual meeting. I think that's probably going to be just part of life going forward, but as of right now, that's kind of part of that. So, questions, I have Julia first and then Dorothy.
Oh, one second. Is my, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so I want to understand a little bit more why we need to extend this because since we can, you know, I am reading the Resolution R dash 6920. And I think that, you know, if we can continue, we allow this different community who they are having virtual meeting with Zoom, I don't know what is the problem. We don't need to have, you know, some of the language in this, in the Resolution R 6920 can be amended or changed. And also, I want to understand, and I have a couple of questions during the day and, you know, I sent an email to you guys, to understand why, because we have the state, State, State at Home Guideline is going to expire on May 26th. And then we have Dane County with the, you know, the resolution extending the estate sever until July 15th. So I got confused why, you know, I know that we need to follow, we're following the state. We are trying to be more, you know, proactive and be sure that the people maintain the distance and follow the rules. But I think that, I think that we need to, if we are going to extend it to July 15th, I would like to change some of the language in this, the R 6920. Because I think that we can, you know, we can continue with all our city meetings using Zoom. So, and we can move the city forward without, you know, handle the city administration and the mayor, you know, all the responsibility. So this is my comment.
Yeah, I think the problem is, is that this is our Resolution R 7120, which is extending the order. We can't change 6920 because that's not what we're discussing right now. So this is really just kind of extending what we had. So I guess that's, but again, like I said before, this is different than stay at home and when things open. This is really making sure that we can keep using emergency funds and that we, we're going to have virtual meetings probably anyway, but making sure that we're also continuing to stay eligible for any possible grants and reimbursements out there as well. Dorothy, I know you were raising your hand as well.
Yeah, I had sent everyone a copy of Resolution 6920 that I wanted to amend, to update, to add voices of staff and council members, committee chairs and people, rather than just putting it on Pat and Erin to make all the decisions for the city. I would like to have a little bit more of that power brought back to council members and particularly the chairs of committees, whether they want to meet or not. I think there should be more discussion than just Pat and Erin making all the decisions.
I can tell you that actually Pat and I talked with the department chairs and asked them actually, do they think that they need to meet or not? And they actually tell us, yeah, this can wait, or no, we need to make a decision on that. So we actually aren't just making that decision, we're actually talking with department heads on how important that is. But unfortunately, again, this isn't 6920, we can't change that. This is really just extending 6920.
Is there a way we could add such language into 7120? That we, we need at the very least notification to council people and committee people with reasons why we don't need to meet. It has been bothering me greatly that I feel so out of the loop in the decision-making that we're supposed to be charged with being part of.
We can ask department heads to send that out. Like I mentioned earlier, I don't, I think we're going to start having most of the meetings going forward pretty soon here, but we can have department heads kind of just send something out to the department, or actually to the committee members saying, hey, we're not meeting because, you know, these were the only two things on the agenda and they can wait, or something like that as well. Pat, do you want to respond to?
Yeah, yeah, the only reason we haven't had meetings in the past is that there are items that were, that could wait to a future meeting or to a future time. And they weren't really anything that was essential for city business moving forward. So those were the only reasons why meetings were delayed. Or, you know, as the mayor mentioned, we have talked to both the staff person for those committees and the department or and the committee chair in regards to...
Not always the chair, the department head, though, for sure.
Yeah, department heads. And then, you know, if, if there were issues that, for lack of quorum or items like that too, the meetings were canceled. But, yeah, as the mayor mentioned, moving forward, we expect to have the majority of the meetings and we'll probably be doing them virtually just as we're doing the council meetings now.
Julia, did you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. I want to be, you know, I really want to, I really believe that we need to continue to having our committee meetings virtually, even though you, Pat, mentioned that maybe there are no topics to discuss and there is always something to discuss in those meetings. And I want to know if as a chair of a committee, I can call to a meeting, you know, I can call a meeting because, you know, I want to know, you know, if I can continue deciding to say, I want to continue having my CDA meetings, I have the authority to do it?
Well, the chair doesn't have the authority to call meetings on their own, but I think, like I said, we've talked about multiple times now, we see most meetings starting to happen and when stuff is important, I think especially, you know, during the major part of COVID, it didn't seem very safe to necessarily have meetings, but because we've gotten these online options available now, I think going forward, most of the meetings are going to happen at this point. So, yeah, Julia, go ahead.
Okay, my last one, Gabriela. My question is, so when you said that most of the meetings are going to come, so you are telling us that in June we are going to have with those meetings, can we start with our meetings? I want to have some reassurance that when this is going to happen, because we can, we can have meetings virtually. We have Zoom, we have the technology. I don't know why we cannot do it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, even in June, or in May, some, a bunch more are happening. I can't remember which one, it was May 30th is meeting and I'm sure CDA is probably going to meet again this month. I think more and more of them are, even through this month. And I think by June 1st, I see probably all of them at that point going, starting. So, yeah, I, we're, it sounds like people want to have meetings and meet. All right, that's great. We can, we're starting to do that more and more. Gabriela?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so I wasn't here obviously when that first resolution was passed and I was, I'm curious, so the Fact TV staff, does everyone, they feel comfortable running like more? Because obviously like we had to learn this process about how to run a meeting through Zoom. Does the, is the staff just feeling more comfortable being able to handle more meetings in the going forward than they were at the beginning? You know, I'm just curious about how the, how the staff is doing.
Yeah, staff's doing great with the meetings and as you can see, we, we meet finance and council in here. In the future, all meetings, as long as we're doing Zoom meetings, given the situation, will occur in here because it's easiest for fact staff to do it in here. But yeah, we're, we, meaning staff, are very efficient at what we're doing now and I think, as the mayor mentioned, we're happy to move forward with all meetings. That wasn't the reason we weren't having the meetings, though. It was just that in, in a lot of situations, there weren't topics that were necessary to call a meeting for.
And I think, you know, the biggest challenge is going to just be going forward if more than one committee is supposed to meet at the same time. So we might have to adjust times a little bit on those because it's, the challenges with Fact TV especially is having two meetings at once. So like public safety, when they have to meet, usually they meet the same time as finance, but we might just have them meet a little bit earlier. But if everyone goes online, you won't have to, no one will have to come here or anything like that. So that's probably the biggest thing is just having, and that's, those conflicts are pretty rare. Everything is spread out pretty well on the calendar so that we don't have those conflicts so that people can get to any meeting that they want to. Julia, do you have another question?
Yes, I want, you mentioned that we need to extend this, this resolution because, because you mentioned about grants that the city can apply, but you mentioned before when I asked you, in the city that is applying for grant, that there are not too many grants out there for cities. So this is what I want to understand. You mentioned that we need to have this, extend this because there are some grants. Can you be more specific about this?
We don't know what grants are out there, but this will just help ensure that we're eligible for those things if they come up. And they might not be anything that comes forward, it's, that's possible, but just in case a grant would say that you have to be under a state of emergency when these expenses happened, we want to make sure that we have that in our bag to say, oh yeah, we, we still had the emergency declared and so, yep, all these expenses were ongoing. Because if we stopped the, that, then they could say, well, you can only get expenses reimbursed up until that point. We don't know if that's going to be possible, but we want to make sure that we're covered and protected as a city.
So in reading the resolution that we're discussing, it says, via Resolution 6920 is hereby extended until it is repealed or amended by the Pittsburgh Common Council or until the expiration of the Dane County Emergency Declaration. So within that, it is saying or indicating the possibility of amending that, which is why I wanted to add language into it as an amendment, which it looks as though this resolution would allow.
That would, no, so, well, we can amend it, yes, but you can't amend it with this agenda item. It has to be a separate agenda item that I would guess the next meeting, I guess, we could put on the agenda to amend. I don't really see the point of the amendment, but you can't amend 6920 because that's not what's on the agenda. That would have to be a separate agenda item at the next, at a future meeting.
You know, can I ask a question about protocol and process?
Yep.
I don't understand why we can only amend this resolution when every resolution that we have on the table in the council, we can amend.
You can amend 7120, but you can't amend 6920 because 6920 is not on the agenda, 7120 is.
Okay, so we can add some language to this one?
Yeah. Pat, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, if, if the Alders are looking to add something in addition to, what, 6920? If I'm saying that number right, is 6920? I don't have that in front of me. Is, if, if you want to add something to 7120 that's in addition to 6920, you can add that to Resolution 7120. But you just can't amend the other resolution at this time. So what I'm hearing Dorothy say is that she would like to have additions in regards to who weighs in on... on um having meetings or not, and that would be included in seventy-one twenty.
Right, I mean, you can just do that.
Right. I mean, if, if, if the body wants to do that, you could call for that in this resolution, adding another whereas clause or something.
Can we add in the one whereas clause that I included in sixty-nine twenty, which reads whereas unless there is urgency in the timing of scheduling, committee chairs, the council president, and other council members, as appropriate, should be included in decision making.
You can, we don't do group decision making on that stuff, but I mean, what I'm hearing is that, you know, you want at least the the chair of the committee to weigh in if we're gonna cancel it, but, and we can do that, and Pat's even said that we can have that, we can, that's no problem. But we're not gonna call the, ask, I'm not gonna call everyone on the council and say, hey, are you okay with not having the CDA meeting, or not having library board, or something like that. I mean, that's, that's not, I have something we have to do.
I, I believe that's why, you know, um, in these type decisions, we, decisions, we do have an, a, a chief executive officer, and that's the mayor that makes these type of decisions. Um, I don't think um, that's a policy, policy decision to have a meeting or not. That's an executive decision.
I mean, it kinda sounds like what the assembly's trying to do, take away power from the governor a little bit right now. Uh, Sarah, sorry, I saw your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I just wanted to say that for public health and safety, this being on that commission, I've always just trusted that the staff cancels meetings, that there's some months that we don't have a meeting, and they're the experts, they know if we have agenda items to discuss or not, and if they are an emergency. And I've always been very comfortable with that, and I've, we've never had a concern, so this, I, I didn't see the need to modify any language or add any additional clauses, just that I think that staff and the mayor have been doing a great job of knowing when there are important meetings, and it's been working for public health and safety for as, as long as I've been on it. And so it's not necessarily something new. Um, it just seems like we'll meet when we have to. We have gates in place to catch those meetings that are important, and we'll, we'll be able to discuss as needed.
I agree with Sarah.
Jan, you agree?
I agree with Sarah.
Okay. Alright, anything else?
I saw Julia hand.
No, I, I don't have anything to say anymore, but I don't understand, I don't understand why do we need to extend this when we have the power to continue running the city virtually. That's it.
Right, and the, the two things that I would say is um first of all, e- emails about scheduling meetings are not subject to um laws related to um open meetings and things, so it would not be a problem to shoot an email to the entire council saying, these are the meetings that we're planning on having, and these are the ones that we're not planning on having, and these are the reasons why. We have been virtually shut out of this process for two months now, and we're talking about extending it another to June fifteenth. I would like to not feel so shut out.
I guess I'm not sure what you're shut out about. We cancel meetings all the time, and we don't ask everyone on council to weigh in on everything that happens. That's not really the role of the council. Uh, Joe, go ahead.
Excuse the background noise from the toddler. Um, so I uh, I, I mean, I think, I don't need to repeat other things that um council cross, or council member Krausy or Radifrada said, but I will say that it sounds like um um, health uh becomes a non-issue due to the fact that we have virtual online capabilities. So I think the health piece might be being conflated in this resolution with um, you know, the need to cancel a meeting because there aren't items. I think that would be a, that would be um something that may happen, and, and I'm new to the council, so I don't know, but that, but based on prior experience, that might be something that would happen regardless of whether we're in a pandemic, so I just wanted to, you know, note that if it's about, it's about health, you know, let's, let's say why it's about health, but if it's, if health isn't the issue, I, I think that is, item shouldn't be conflated with why a meeting would need to be canceled, if there are virtual capabilities.
Yeah, you're right. We're canceling because there's a health concern, it's because there's nothing that is critical to talk about right now, and they either can wait, or anything down there can wait.
Yep.
Anything else? Done.
Pat, I guess I just wanna bring up something you said, which I kinda, I like. Um, but I'm gonna take it a step further. It has to do with meetings, like if we have meetings, like personnel hasn't met, maybe we meet at the end of May, which I'm fine with. But if we have it in here, and then other people don't wanna come, they can still come, like Skype, I get that, they can come in. But the other thing I think we wanna remember is for the public, if there's an agenda item that they wanna come to talk on, and they wanna wear a mask, that's their call. That's not our call, that's their call. They can come. So, I mean, I like the idea, what you said, have the meetings in here, or even if they're down the hall, but people are separated, fine, whatever, but the other piece to your puzzle is for the public, if they wanna come to these different meetings, whatever they may be. Um, I mean, you opened the door, I think, if I'm hearing you right.
Yeah, yep, all meetings are open to the public. We have overflow rooms here, two overflow rooms in City Hall, those being the other two conference rooms, so we just wanna maintain social distancing for the public that does wanna come. Uh, we do have a reporter in here, and she's sitting way in the back, far away from me, so everyone's encouraged to come if they wish.
Social distancing, actually. She just doesn't wanna sit close to you.
Yeah, that's right. Um, so we are maintaining it, and um, people that may not feel comfortable in here, but want to um be in the other rooms, they're welcome to do that, so um, we'll do that.
And one other question for you. Um, it has to do with the declaration, uh, declared by the governor, we've been following the governor, I get that, you know. Why is the county executive in here, and why is Dane County in here? Was that just because of, is it something we have to follow protocol in reference to receiving money back to the city? But why do we have to follow Dane County? I, I lost that part.
We're, we're following Dane County's order in turn, because the uh County Department of Health is the uh entity that we follow in regards to any situation um that would involve um an emergency, so, so we're just paralleling that process because we would follow their, their lead in that regards.
We don't have a health department.
No, we, we respond to the county health department for direction on these issues.
Julia, go ahead.
Yes, my other question is, um, you know, uh, if we are following Dane County, and then on May twenty-sixth, you know, um, the state, uh, state at home, you know, um, rule expired, so it means that we can reopen our economy on May twenty-sixth.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so, and this is what I don't get, is why is it July fifteen county? What, I, I didn't understand, first of all, I didn't understand that why the county did that, when they did it, you know, um, but the question is, we need to follow the state first, isn't it?
And we will continue to follow the state. That's completely separate. Safer Home and Business Opening, that's a separate thing. That's the governor, we follow that. This is allowing us to keep using the emergency fund. Um, officially, even though we, we're gonna do it anyway, but allowing virtual meetings, making sure that emergency budgets, budgetary procedures, if we need them, are still in order, and then also that piece where if there is some kind of reimbursement opportunity in the future, if it's reliant on when, how long our emergency declaration went, that we can continue to get those expenses through July fifteenth. And if the county decides, hey, we're gonna end it on June first, then we'll come back and we'll end ours on June first, because we're gonna keep following the county on that piece to it, but the Safer Home is a completely different thing. As the governor continues to re- uh ease up restrictions, we, we follow that as well. Go ahead, Julia.
I have another question. You know, some of the um, the other resolution that we approved, like, I don't know, a couple of meeting ago about the um, using the emergency fund to pay for some of our um overtime for the people that they are doing. You know, um, you know, they are working because of COVID-nineteen. That one, um, that one, I, I think we, when we, that one expired in December, isn't it? So we don't have to follow the July fifteen staff, because we are gonna be still covering our employee staff through our emergency fund up to December, uh, December twenty-twenty, isn't it that?
I, I don't have it in front of me, I don't, I don't know. I know for the, the sick leave piece, yes. But not the, I don't know about the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars emergency fund. I don't. We approved it, though.
Yeah, this is why I am confused with all of this.
Alright, seeing nothing else, then, we can go ahead and vote. Might as well just do a roll call. I don't, didn't have an idea where people are gonna vote on this. Uh, so, we are voting on extending the emergency proclamation that you have in your packet, R seventy-one twenty. If you are in favor of extending, say aye, and if you are not, nay. You can go ahead and call us off for me, Tracy, I'd appreciate it.
Alder Radifrada?
No.
Alder Clouter?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Krausy?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Schroder?
Aye.
Alder Strassman? Alder Udel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you. Going on, uh, since this is Public Works, Sarah, do you wanna read this one for me?
Sure, sorry. So um, I'd make a motion to approve, or to approve Resolution R ninety-five twenty, authorizing acceptance of the Burn Pond retrofit bid and budget amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, and did Public Works approve, Sarah?
Yes.
Did Parks?
Yes.
Alright, what about Finance?
Yes.
Yes, alright. You wanna speak to this one, Sarah?
Sure. So for this one, um, the uh, has a per culvert that's in the back corner, and they have a, city engineers have proposed modifying the culvert to kind of be a better way to handle stormwater, and I apologize, I don't have the listing here exactly, but it would basically be where they can have it by redesigning the area and removing some dirt. They can have it be where the water is more um filtered before it is released into the sp- uh farmland that's adjacent to it. Um, I apologize. I don't know if Pat is still in the room, but he can probably talk better to the engineering specs.
He is. Why don't you go ahead, Pat?
Yeah, I, I can talk better to it, just because I have Mike's notes here, so. Alright, um, I'll just read this. Um, I read it at Finance too. Uh, the city is pursuing a retrofit to burn dry pond to provide water quality benefits and increase infiltration prior to discharging stormwater uh from the neighborhood. This project was presented at a neighborhood meeting, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, at neighborhood meetings on May first twenty nineteen, March thirteenth twenty nineteen, and February twenty-fifth of this year. Work with the park, uh, work within the park parcel was presented to the Parks Commission on March fifth of this year, and approved by the Parks Commission on May seventh of this year. Uh, Public Works followed a number of procedures to ensure that all area contractors completing this type of work were informed of the city's bid. The bid was posted on Quest CND, or CDN, which is the bid website on March twenty-third of this year, and advertised by legal notice in the State Journal on March twenty-sixth and April second of this year. The city received four bids for the project. On April seventeenth, the cost for the project is three hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, the CIP forty-seven oh-two, the city allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars funded by the Stormwater Utility for the project. Twenty-four thousand five hundred and twelve has already been spent on the design and services, and there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-eight remaining. Uh, the city obtained a matching grant from the DNR for thirty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. The city anticipates receiving another grant uh that would be on Thursday from Dane County, which will cover fifty percent of the project costs, or a hundred and eighty-two thousand one seventy-five. This would allow the city to increase the budget to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars without increasing uh money out of pocket. The low bid was Badgerland Excavating uh for Madison in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand five twenty-eight, and an additional fifteen thousand or five percent in contingency. So I, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Yeah, I think the big thing is that we were gonna redo the pond, I think dredge it out. We'll actually decide, hey, we can make this work even better, and the DNR is actually gonna chip in money towards making it even better than it was, so it works even better. And the extra cost is actually being picked up by the DNR, so as a city, we ultimately, bottom line, won't increase the amount we spend on it. However, it will work even better than it had originally been designed to do.
That's correct, and with the grant from the county that's expected on Thursday, not guaranteed, any approval by this body would be contingent upon the grant from Dane County.
Alright, any other questions at all? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? Alright, that one's approved, and how about, this is Public Works two, it looks like. Sarah, you wanna read this one for me too?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution R ninety-five, excuse me, R ninety-seven twenty, approving the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Town of Verona to complete a study of Goose Lake.
Second.
Alright, and did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance?
Yes.
Alright, they did as well. Uh, do you wanna speak to this, or do you want Pat to, Sarah?
I have a better handle on this one. Uh, for this one, so the study for Goose Lake was previously approved. Um, and when they reef, when they kind of have gotten into it and have discovered the flaws with the existing model, um, that's true, kind of what the current problem is, and they'd like additional funding to, for the consultant. They're aiming to have the study done within the fall of twenty-twenty, but how it's working out is that since this is shared with the Town of Verona, we have to agree, oh, I'm getting an internet, um, we have to agree with how we spend our funds and where the kind, the funding is coming from, where half of it would come from the Town of Verona, and half of it would come from Pittsburgh. Uh, for the additional funding, I believe it was six thousand, who is here? Yeah, I, I think it was six thousand from the Town of Verona and six thousand from Pittsburgh that we were ideally hoping to um contribute. I don't know, Pat, if that's true, if you wanna correct me.
Yeah, that's correct. It's six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars is the additional cost.
Thank you, but yeah, it, it's overall is that Goose Lake has uh water, stormwater issues. We'd love to study it and um, understand as to what could be done to improve that area. The funding has to come from both Pittsburgh and the Town of Verona to uh accommodate the additional cost of the study.
Yep, and it's important because if you have been on Fitchroona, when it, it gets a lot of rain, then we have to close it down, because it backs up and floods over Fitchroona Road, and so that's a big piece, is that we wanna make sure that Goose Lake can handle that, and I think the big issue from what we, we think is the water going out the other end. And I think the big issue from what we, we think is the water going out the other end is not going out as fast as we want. We wanna make sure that that's the case and get Goose Lake solved so that when we redo Fitcherona Road, it does not keep flooding. We don't wanna invest a bunch of money into a new road and then have it flood and get damaged and have to close it. It's a huge annoyance for people to live in that area. Shannon?
Would that help actually, like with some of the houses that are over there that, like, they totally have their whole front yard that completely floods? There's like two houses over there that, I mean,
Yeah, that's the hope is that those houses, that their yards flood, that that'll prevent that as well because more water will be able to get through there, because I know some of those yards do flood. Any other questions? Alright, I know it was, um, paint gonna, we were gonna replace that culvert on Fitcherona and this is what we can use to pay for that because we're gonna wait until we just redo Fitcherona Road to replace the culvert as part of that project. So, we don't have to spend more money that we haven't already budgeted. Alright, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? Alright, that is approved. Announcements, uh, next common council meeting is in two weeks and the next committee of the whole, which is gonna be the first committee of the whole for a few of you, is gonna be on the night of May 27th, those are at 7 o'clock, uh, just so you know. That's not 7:30, like council meetings, those are at 7 o'clock. So, with that, if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn, that'd be great. Oh, Dorothy, you got, sorry, question?
Yeah, I wanted to find out, hopefully the committee of the whole meeting will be talking about, um, the CIP process a lot. Um, I'd like to find out exactly what work is gonna be on it, though.
Uh, yeah, Julia, you wanna talk about the two items?
So, um, the first hour of the meeting, we are gonna have, um, Misty Dodge, she's gonna explain the CIP, uh, the Capital Improvement Plan process and procedures, um, so we are, because we are, you know, summertime, we do that. And then especially for the new alders, so to have like a, you know, to they understand how the process works and a refresh for, for all of us. And the second, eh, part, uh, part of the, you know, the second hour, uh, I invited Sonia Crusoe, uh, the Director of Planning, so she can give us a one-on-one, uh, planning basic for, um, for all of us to go throughout the, you know, um, you know, uh, the terminology, um, uh, comprehensive, like, uh, you know, um, summary comprehensive plan and, uh, what is a land use, what is a sowing, you know, to understand the basic of planning, especially for, for new alders. Uh, and I think it's a good refresh for all of us, too, so. Um, so that one are gonna be the topics for the next meeting.
Alright, sounds good, thank you. Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, signed by Shannon, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Alright, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone, online.